Communications, WCC Education Association. Ms. Kissel, how are you?
Good. Hopefully you can hear me today. Am I yelling enough or?
Uh, no. The mic can be increased some.
Move the mic closer.
Is this?
Much better.
That helps? Okay. We'll get this figured out. Well, it's February 2023. Now, most of us realized last Tuesday that the weather would most certainly be a problem, and it was. In fact, there were still a handful of faculty and staff relying on generators, family, or friends for warmth, power, and the Internet. However, most of us were able to continue to meet with students, run a class, grade work, or just assure the students that we understood that the weather frustrations were there for us too. So with the upcoming break, many of us, including the students, are hoping to use the time to catch up and recharge for the second half of the term. Now regarding grievances, there are no active grievances at this time as the grievance from last year remains in abeyance. Much of WCC's efforts recently have been preparing for the adjunct negotiations. The WCCA Board, let me move that, did approve its negotiation team. Jason Withrow will be our chief negotiator. Erin Anderson, Allison Fornier, Michelle Gary, Cheryl Whitmer, and myself will round up the group. Jason has held two listening sessions, created an online space to collect feedback, and has begun to set the task for the team. As Jason indicated to VP Swick during our contract implementation meeting last week, we will be ready to bargain beginning in May and hope to consider possible times and dates as soon as we can. Just recently, I received updates from the MEA regarding membership, and the WCC EA proudly has a 91% membership rate. We're among the highest in the county. And much of this credit goes to our amazing WCC EA Board. Our 2022-2023 Board just held its final meeting, and with our new Board, it will be seated in March. Those who serve on the Board or any of the contractual committees create the stability and continuity of the work for WCC. As the college continues to see an increase in retirements and other departures, this institutional continuity remains crucial as the higher education landscape changes rapidly. On a more somber note, many of us are still trying to understand the horror of the shooting at MSU just two weeks ago. Whether we are trying to help our children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or friends deal with this traumatic event, many of us find ourselves without answers. We feel helpless, discouraged, or angry that those close to us are struggling to cope with a senseless violence. We also wonder if it could happen at WCC. Will it happen at WCC? Will it happen in some other public space? These questions linger for many of us with no clear answers. However, last week in my meeting with President Blanca, she asked how things can be better on our campus in general. And I've thought a great deal about this since that conversation, and I raised it to our WCC EA Board. For many of us, so much comes down to relationships. For me, I have a strong network of support through my union, my department, my relationships across campus. This has developed over many, many years. But I do worry about my colleagues who continue to feel isolated or disconnected because of the years of stress throughout the pandemic and the shifts of relationships on campus. Therefore, building stronger relationships through shared experiences will be the key to the health of this institution and its role in the community. And should we ever be faced with such a traumatic event, these positive relationships will make all the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kissel. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any written communication? Okay, thank you. Moving on to special reports, affirmative action report by VP Swick.
Good evening, Board members. It's my pleasure to present the 2021-22 affirmative action report this evening. I want to begin by laying out an outline of the information that we'll be providing. We'll begin with looking at the Board of Trustees affirmative action policy statement. We'll move on to the 2021-22 combined report, examine summary and outcomes, including our employment activity, our county workforce minority benchmarks, and the current focus and the future focus of the Human Resources Department in continuing to try to meet the goals that are established by the Board's policy. Now, the Board's affirmative action policy statement is paraphrased here. It's policy number 5010. It indicates that the College will seek to employ qualified personnel and will not discriminate against any individuals on the basis listed. The third bullet here in our paraphrasing of the policy is that the college's employment of women and minority individuals shall be aligned with the employed population of Washtenaw County. That's the metric that we use to determine our success in this regard. Moving on now, the 21-22 combined report. This report includes WCC employment data combining activity in 2021 and 22. This report includes 2021 and 22 data. The 2021 affirmative action report was delayed pending 2020 census information reflecting updated county employment data. Some of you might recall last year, this report was scheduled and it was delayed because we were unable to obtain the census data required at the county level in order to proceed. We have that data available now, and we're prepared to make a presentation for both of these years in a combined fashion. So the timeframe reflects considerable change in the WCC workforce as well as declining workforce participation nationwide. Our employment efforts have been focused on filling crucial vacancies as soon as possible with a limited workforce that's available. 2021 and 22 were challenging years in regard to the employment activity at the college. Our state as well as the nation was experiencing a spiraling decline in the workforce, and due to COVID, rightsizing to deal with COVID, low enrollment, and what's been generally described as the Great Resignation, WCC experienced 160 full-time separations due to retirement or resignation. However, I'm happy to report that WCC was able to hire 157 full-time employees during this difficult period in order to keep our college fully staffed. Some comments on the census data itself. Updated census data reflected an increase in the county minority employed population of 3%, meaning that there's an increase in the minority population that's employed in the county. There was also a over 3% increase noted among individuals identifying as "other," and that means those who are not identifying as being part of any of the demographic classifications that the Census Bureau provides. There was also a decrease of 1% noted in the Asian and Black or African-American populations within the county's workforce. This presentation will focus on the actions that have been taken by Human Resources to support diversity recruitment and hiring during COVID and post-COVID, as well as the redirection of recruiting efforts to match or exceed the increased minority representation in Washtenaw County. So now, let's review the employment activity which actually took place during these two The college, when faced with this significant number of absences, looked to fill these vacancies from within the college. And as you can see, over 50% of the hiring resulted from internal promotions of both full-time and part-time staff. Eighty-one employees were promoted to fill full-time positions. Forty percent of the promotions that were made were of minority employees. And over 70 employees were hired, and 29% of the new hires were minority candidates. And you can see that indicated in the graph wherein we indicate the number of promotions as being 40% minority, and the number of hires, full-time hires during that two-year period as 29% minority. Also indicated is the college, the demographic distribution of the college's current workforce. We know that new hires and promotions are just one piece of the employment activity that impacts the total minority workforce representation. The other piece that's significant to consider is that of the employees separated through resignation and retirement during those two years, we lost a little over 30% of our minority All of the employment activity occurred along with our remaining workforce resulted in a total minority workforce of 25%. That percentage is unchanged from our previous report of two years ago. This next slide is a historical perspective on promotions and hiring activity over the last five years. You can see 2021, which is a combined number there, see what the activity was in 2020 and 2019, as well as 2018. You'll note that this year's, this two years' performance is better than what we achieved in 2018, but less successful in minority promotion and hiring than we achieved in Now we'll look at the WCC workforce employment activity in minority and female representation by introducing information relative to the Washtenaw County workforce. In comparison to the county, with the updated census information, Washtenaw Community College total full-time minority representation trails the county by 4%. Therefore, it does not meet the metric as set forth within the Board of Trustees' policy. I would note, however, that the college considerably exceeds the employment of females in the workplace, with 58% of the county's full-time workforce being female, and the Washtenaw County total workforce being 48% female. However, the Washtenaw County workforce is 29% minority, and the community colleges' minority representation stands currently at 25%. I would note that in the past two years, we were able to hire at the 29% level, which reflects the current county workforce. But as I mentioned earlier, the loss of significant number of minorities in resignations and retirements leaves us a little bit short of our goal with respect to total minority employment. All right, the next slide demonstrates specifically which categories are underrepresented. Now, this slide, there's two columns for each category, and the green being the Washtenaw Community College employees, and the blue being the Washtenaw County workforce. So starting from the left, you can see that with respect to American Indian and Alaskan natives, the college employs 6/10 of 1%, and our benchmark is .3%, so we're slightly above the benchmark with respect to that group. With respect to Asian employees, you can see that the county benchmark is at 8.5%. Currently employed within the college are Asian employees representing 3.2%. We are therefore more than 5% underrepresented with respect to Asian employees in our college workforce. With respect to Black or African-American employees, you can see that we are 14.7% for the college, 11% for the county. We're over 3% overrepresented relative to the Black and African-American community. With respect to Hispanic or Latino employees, you can see it's close, but we are still 1% underrepresented. And with regard to the "other" category, you can see we are 0.5% underrepresented with regard to employees in this undercategory. I do want to bring this to your attention because the census data for 2020 reflected a 3% increase in the number of individuals identifying themselves as being in the "other" category. We expect this category to grow, and it is something, it's somewhat opaque to us because we're not really sure, other than it not being in any of the other listed categories, precisely what individuals who've chosen to identify as "other," what their demographic background might be. So that's an indication of where we stand vis-à-vis our minority benchmarks. Clearly, we have work to do relative to increasing our representation of both Asian and Hispanic employees at the college. And the next slide begins to talk about how we intend to approach that problem. This is our current focus. As it indicates, we were able to resume and accelerate our diversity recruitment post-pandemic in the latter part of 2022 and increase available training. You can see here the groups that we are currently, have relationships with in an attempt to seek out qualified applicants for our positions. I'd like to take note of our WCC partner, historically Black colleges and universities, Jackson State, Central State, and Southern University of New Orleans. I'd also like to thank the diversity and inclusion staff, as well as VPI Vega for their assistance in identifying some of the organizations on this page that we are currently working with in order to increase our Asian and Hispanic representation. So these are the current focus in terms of what we're doing. We also have a future focus, and that's identified on the next slide. And as you can see in the left-hand column, all of those organizations are very focused on either Asian or Hispanic or other specific ethnic groups, and we look forward to working out relationships with these various organizations so that we can employ their cooperation in terms of securing, again, qualified Asian and Hispanic applicants. We also plan to reach out to an additional local and national organizations to include a fraternity near and dear to one of our executive members, Theta, Zeta, Lambda, and those of you who are Theta, Zeta, Lambda know who you are. So thank you for your time this evening. Does anyone have questions?
Trustee Hatcher?
My first comment is that, I think I received this via email last night, yesterday, and I would like to have had it a little bit earlier so I could have looked at it in more detail. We get these reports at the meeting, and then next month I have questions, but, okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. We can't hear you. So, you know what, it's this, something's going on back here. Air handling? Sorry, trustee Hatcher.
I was just saying that I wish I had gotten this report. I'm a slow learner, so I would have liked it a little bit earlier. I'm not sure we've ever looked at promotions as a factor in doing the numbers, and I'm wondering if promotions accounted for 40% of the minorities, or they counted twice? Because those promotions were counted as employees, and then they were counted as promotions, so that that skewed the number, I would think, quite considerably.
No, I mean, they were employees previously, that's correct. And so in reviewing the total number of employees, they would be included as minority employees in that representation. In a subset of our total employees, that is those who were promoted, 40% of that group was promoted to a different position during the two years covered by the report.
We've never counted promotions before, this report, I don't think.
I'm not certain. We're trying to address a very large number of vacancies, and we have a variety of ways of doing that. Some is through promotion, and some is through hiring. So we felt it was appropriate to demonstrate how we had filled all the various vacancies, and also, of course, give you the data for our total workforce in terms of what its representation is.
My other question is, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, we were giving away money for people so they wouldn't leave. Do we have a sense, I mean, that's what we did, right? We gave a million dollars, and then we gave another 500, hoping to stem the tide of people leaving. Do we know of the people who left, how many of those were women or minorities?
Yes, we know that of those who left, 30% of those individuals who left us were minorities.
Yeah. I looked at 2022, and I found that about half the people who left, left after fewer than 10 years. So faculty were leaving after 20 years and 30 years, but other people were leaving after one, two, three, five years. And I'm just wondering if that might have some connection to that 30% of minorities who are leaving. Has anybody ever looked at that?
I can only say that in the exit interview data that we see, there's no indication of that. I think that this last two years was a tumultuous period in our workforce, as well as across the nation.
Sure.
And so many people changed jobs for a variety of reasons. I can't speculate why any of these individuals did, but they certainly didn't identify that they felt that a 3% or 4% change in the diversity of the workforce at the college, or actually, there was no change in the diversity of the workforce at the college. The last report was 25%. This report was 25%. We're a little further behind now because the number has advanced the 29% in terms of the total working population as against the working population in the county.
Well, can we see a report of 2021, 22, so we can compare it to '23 in terms of people leaving, and how many years they've served, and whether they have minority status? So we can begin to track this to see if there's any patterns that emerge?
Sure. Do you mean by that comparing the departures during '21, '22 to '20 and '19?
Yeah, exactly. And how many years they had served at the college and their minority status? No names, of course.
Yes, we can certainly get you that information.
Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher, could you repeat that so I can understand what your request is?
My request is to go back, you said 2019, that's fine, to look at how many people left, how many years they had served at the college, and their minority status.
Okay.
So we can see whether...
More minorities left than not?
Right, and whether a lot of people are leaving. If, you know, if people are leaving after a year or two, there might be something else going on beside looking for another job. It used to be that people worked here for 30 years and never left. Well, something's going on, and I know the national numbers about people leaving, but we need to address, you know, either hiring practices for people who aren't going to stay here more than a year, or some sort of environmental issue that people aren't staying for more than 10 years or more than five years. A lot of people, as I looked at 2022, left after two years. After, one person left after less than a year. So I just want to see what's going on before we give out another million dollars. That's all.
Oh, I understand. I guess it would depend, though, on the percentage. You know, is it five people, 10 people, 5,000 people? I mean, you know what I mean, how many people to make an impact? But I understand what you're requesting.
Of the 75 people who left in 2022, half of them had only been here less than 10 years.
That's, okay. I'm not going to debate it.
Vice Chair Milligan?
I understand the nature of the query, and I assume that Vice President Swick will be aware of this, but those years that we're talking about, there may be some anomalous data in there because of COVID, and I don't know how you factor that in, but people like Mr. Swick perhaps can help us through that when he comes back to the table with his data.
We have to begin to see what the trends are because things have changed because of COVID, and they're not going back to the way they were in 2015, probably.
I would just say this, we can obviously collect the data and relate it to the Board. We can't always, obviously, discern the motivation. However, I would mention that it's widely documented in the press that the very low unemployment numbers that we've been experiencing in the immediate aftermath of the pandemic have led to many people changing jobs for a variety of reasons. So there is more turnover in the workplace generally than we've seen in the past.
Right, and we need to know if that continues or whether it's going to change.
Anything else? Okay. Trustee McGinn-Morton?
While we're on this, I went to my SimCOG meeting last Friday, got a ton of information. And I'm looking at some of this information now. It states that in their query of all the counties that is under their umbrella, well, they did Washtenaw County, did all counties, and one of the things that they have here is a forecast summary. And by 2025, it's going to be like just less under 380,000 in population. So there is going to be a smidgen more by '25. That's only two years from now. And also in two years, employment is going to be over 280,000. So it shows by their, and plus, they broke it down, maybe you can get a copy of this, of all the jobs that will be coming to our area, and some more, some less. And I just want to say this too, that for the Ann Arbor population, it will go from now, over 123,000, almost 124,000, by 2030, it's just going to go up roughly 5,000. So it's not going to be a big, big push in this county. And right now, SimCOG is very concerned about the influx out, not the influx in. And that's another big problem because people are moving, starting to move to Michigan because of their other states and their weather patterns. However, that's still out there to be discussed further. But most of people, majority of people, are leaving Michigan. So we have to face up to it. I don't care how many studies we do or compare apples to oranges, we have to understand that we're losing people. And if they're leaving this, if they're leaving our institution, other institutions are suffering too. It's not just us, it's others also. So I just want to throw that out. If maybe I can have our secretary, Madam Brooks, to make a copy of this for you, because I think it's very helpful for you to see what they do unless you get this information too.
I do not, and I would appreciate very much seeing it. And I would just note that, obviously, there has been a great deal of movement within the country, and Michigan is one of the states that's, I don't believe, has been a net immigration state. It's been a net immigration state, and that's a concern for all of us. And I think that when we look at the number of unfilled jobs across the economy, that's also some reflect- that's also some reflection of people leaving places, even though there is abundant employment here.
You're right. You're right.
Any trustee Hatcher? Trustee DeVary?
Thank you for the presentation. I do want to note, although the board policy is to use the county workforce as our benchmark, I'm looking at this one page and looking at the difference between our workforce and WCC students who are present on our campus. And I see black or African-American where we are above our benchmark with the county workforce. We're below by a small percentage, by 0.7%, what our student body is. But we're really a large disparity, much larger disparity of Hispanic or Latino workforce in relationship to the amount of Hispanic or Latino students on our campus. So that's...
Looking at?
I'm looking at, I don't know, this page doesn't have a number.
Page four? It's in the lower right-hand corner, but it's very faint.
Number four.
Yes.
And one of the, I'd almost like to see broken out because one of the primary interfaces between our student body and our workforce is in the classroom. And to break out the WCC workforce in two categories, faculty and non-faculty, just to see if where that interface between the students and the workforce happens on a regular basis, several times a week potentially, to see what sort of disparities there might be between faculty and students in terms of racial representation. So that's something I'd like to see. I know it's different. It's different than the board policy for benchmarks, and it's not, I'm not making a criticism. I'm just hoping that that could be information that would provide some clarity, some additional clarity to where we are and to give us some fodder for thought moving forward.
Yes, we can certainly provide that. There is data on the makeup of the faculty with regard to promotions, new hires, and separations on page five of the report. So you can get some sense of the faculty there, although it's only recent activity, separations, promotions, and new hires. I would say obviously the student body of the college reflects the future demographics of Washtenaw County significantly. The benchmark that were provided in the board policy, which is the employed population of Washtenaw County, I believe starts at age 16 and moves up from there. So it's a very large demographic in terms of the age of the people it's covered while our college, I would guess, I haven't looked at those numbers, would tend to skew younger than that significantly. But it is important to know that and to see what the future looks like. And as you note, the shortage or the underrepresentation of Hispanics is also prevalent in that data as well as our current employment data. Thank you very much.
Trustee Hatcher and then McKnight-Morton?
I'm just reminded of the fact that we've prided ourselves for several years on having an enrollment number that was much better than the rest of Michigan. That our enrollment numbers did not decline as well as everybody else's, that we maintained an enrollment level that was healthy. And I credit that perhaps to our marketing department for doing that work. It seems to me that we need to do the same thing perhaps with hiring. Where's the marketing? I mean, I think leaving it all to HR is a lot. The faculty used to do all the marketing for jobs in their area. And they, it was more than they could do. And we have a, I don't know how many people, five or six people in a marketing department now that obviously does a good job because we have the students. So perhaps we need a marketing wing of that office to do that for hiring and particularly hiring minorities and women. Just a suggestion.
I would support that.
I just want to throw this out. Quite a few years ago, before Dr. Blanca's tenure, I had a deep, deep discussion with our previous HR director. And that was because we were not, we didn't have the minority numbers that we should have. And I questioned where they were getting their information and where they were going to recruit. And it was not with minority colleges, universities, or any organizations until I started speaking to that. I am so happy to see that you have a full list of organizations and outreach to these fraternities and sororities that I had not seen before. So this is a real good step forward to trying to reach the people that is needed. I am, a lot of places, probably like other people, but every time I see a minority person, I ask them, are you happy where you are? They say yes, or they say no. If they say, well, sometimes, maybe, I don't know, then I say, come to Washtenaw Community College. Never forget where we are because you're right in our area, not too far. I think we have to continue to be what the community has voted us into this position, to be the spokesperson for this institution. And to let people know, we're looking for people. Do you have a degree? What are your credentials? Can you come here? Do you want to come here? And a lot of times they say yes, but majority, I mean, no, but majority of the time it's yes. So I think that we have to step up our game, trustees. I'm just speaking. But another thing that we used to do back in the day, and I don't know if we want, I have mentioned this to President Blanca before, we used to go into the communities and we would hold meetings. And I think that generates a lot of interest too, so I'm just throwing that back out. And I have one more thing. This projection that I was talking about goes to the year 2050. So we have some time to start looking. I'm not going to be around, I don't think, unless God said no. Your time is enough yet. But in any case, they won't be on this board. But in any case, I just want to let you know that also too.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Hatcher?
I'll always think of something else. I'm always a bit disturbed by the number of departments that have no minorities. And that's always a difficult question. But to bring them to your attention. But also, you know, I think a field or a pool of people who might be interested in coming here are all the sort of disgruntled high school teachers. I mean, our first crew of faculty at Washtenaw Community College came from high school teachers. And there may be a rich pool of them out there who want to teach AP African-American history and can't. So I'm just saying they might want to come here where they could probably do that. So high schools are fertile, I think.
Understood. I think that's something we can certainly discuss with our recruiting staff in terms of reaching out to the high schools. I'm not sure how we'd gather that information necessarily, but it may be publicly available at the high schools. You might have to go to Florida. But the, obviously, the credentialing is a key aspect of any of that recruiting.
Of course.
I just want to say one more thing. Madam Chair, just one more thing. That's it. I'm done. What are you going to do about it? We, trustee Hatcher, myself, and some other people, we've given you some suggestions. We talked about this, but what are you going to do about it? And that's, for me, that's the next step. That's step two for me.
Well, certainly, we believe within our staff and HR that we have the capability to reach out and establish individual relationships with organizations or individuals who might be interested in working here. And we've actually taken the step now of reaching out to specific individuals when we can identify them and attempting to recruit them, which as opposed to just waiting for them to file an application with us once our position is posted. So we have a bit more capability in that area that we'll be developing and with respect to the organizations that you've mentioned, particularly trying to address our underrepresented areas. But those are the main activities. I know President Blanca has asked us to work with the marketing department to develop a video on the benefits of being employed at the college. And I have to say that in my relatively brief time here, one year, many, many of the employees that I speak to are very, they're very much pleased with their employment relationship. And they are willing to, you know, provide testimonials to employment here with the college. So we would, we're going to like to, we're going to try to use that resource as well to reach out into the community and gain some additional candidates.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee DeVary?
One further informational thing that would be interesting to look at. On page six, this data utilization percent, total employees by department and percentage minority. I've just put a question mark here, percentage of female. Maybe there could be three columns there. Total employees, percentage minority, percentage female. And I'm just thinking that it's conceivable some of these departments that have a high percentage of minority may turn out having a really low percentage. I started by looking at these ones and kind of highlighting them at the 0% of minority. But then, as I was looking at the other categories, I was thinking, hmm, I wonder what landscape grounds or custodial services have in terms of percentage of female. Just a point of interest, that I, it would be interesting to look at that.
Good luck on some of these. I'm serious, and I'm not trying to be, I say, good luck on some of these areas that you're talking about. Because this has been a situation for years.
I understand.
Okay?
I understand. I'm just...
I understand.
Information never helps or never hurts.
I keep with you. Thank you.
BP Swick, I think you have been thoroughly exhausted of your expertise here. I do want to say that this affirmative action report was top-notch. And I do appreciate all of the data that you have put in. This is, it's very thorough, and it does explain a lot of where we are and where our areas of improvement is. I also want to add delta sigma theta. You want to also add delta sigma theta. I am not a member of any sorority, but I do give them a lot of props. And I'm happy to see that you have the African-American sorority and fraternities listed, as well as the other sororities and other fraternal groups. So if there's nothing more, I will dismiss you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, moving on to diversity and inclusion update. Dean Reed, Dr. Dean Reed.
Greetings, trustees. Can you hear me?
Can you hold on for a moment, please? Maybe if you adjust your microphone, or someone in the audio can help with the audio because the mic here is on and off. Can you say something?
Is it now okay?
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay. It's my pleasure to present the diversity and inclusion update for 2023. So today's report will cover our board policy on diversity. And then we'll highlight some of the initiatives that we've done over the last year for 2022, 2023. And finally recap some of the upcoming initiatives that we have for diversity. So reiterating our board policy, 8028, a policy on access, success, and equity for diverse people. These are two excerpts from that policy. And first, WCC promotes the awareness and appreciation of cultural differences, commonalities, and commonalities among students, community, and staff groups, seeking to build community, unity, and learning. Furthermore, WCC promotes a climate of access, success, equity for persons from different racial, ethnic, and cultural groups, age levels, religions, sexes, gender identities and expressions, sexual orientations, physical capacities, learning abilities, and income levels. This is very important. Yes, it is a moral responsibility, but we've taken an extra step forward and made a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion by having our own policy. And with that policy, we're going to talk about access first. And when we are making strides in access, we are, you know, our goal is to increase access for all students, but we have an intentional focus on minority student groups as well. So looking at our enrollment for minority groups, race, and ethnicity, we had a increase of 155 students from fall 2021 to 2022, from 2,995 to 3,150 students. So that equals a 2% increase, increase from that year. And going even further, breaking down, breaking down those numbers even further, looking at the various different races, you'll see that each of the different columns has a slight increase. The largest increase is with Asian and Hispanic by 1%. And it's pretty flat with Native American, Pacific Islander. But overall, that equals a 2% increase at the end, going from 34% minorities to 36% minorities. So taking access a little bit further, it's important that we do outreach, that we engage in the community and show our presence. So with doing that, we have strengthened our partnership with Ypsilanti Community Schools. One key point of our outreach is promoting our high school scholarships. Each high school, public high school in the county gets six full ride, six full tuition, and six scholarships that has full tuition and book waivers. So historically, with Ypsilanti Community Schools, we've really been working hard, but we struggled several years ago with getting the number of applicants for that. But we've increased that pool by doing intensive outreach on a weekly basis. So now we've increased the applicant pool, but we've also conveyed all six of those scholarships to Ypsilanti Community Schools. And with doing that outreach in the community at our local high schools, high school districts, and at community events, we've garnered over 268 outreach cards. And from that funnel, if you look at that 268, most of those students are still in high school. So they're in ninth through 11th grade. But looking at that, tracking those 268, 42 of those students actually enrolled last fall semester. So I mentioned the scholarships. This is a visual of, after we did the outreach and awarded our scholarships, we welcomed students by providing welcome boxes to their front doorsteps prior to the beginning of the first semester. So that included messages to inspire them, but it also included invitation to our Student Success Conference. This is a little bit further what our outreach looks like visually to promote more access in the community. Two pictures to the right and left are at two events, at two different events at Ypsilanti Community Schools. In the middle, that's the downtown Ann Arbor African-American Festival. And one key thing about this is very often we get in contact with alumni at these events, and they have a lot of WCC pride. So they're telling their sons and daughters, nieces and nephews, they want a free t-shirt, but they also want the new information of what WCC has as far as reconnect futures to frontliners and everything else we have to offer. So let's talk about success. Once we have students here, we're making sure that they have the resources they need to be successful. And these success initiatives are for all students regardless of their various identities. So our Student Success Conference, which I mentioned earlier on, when we did the welcome boxes, all the students got an invitation to this conference. And this is very exciting because this is the first time since the pandemic we had it in person, and we had a very good turnout. That day is a one-day seminar right before the start of the semester. And students, they get engaged with our tutoring services, our counseling services for their own mental health, our coaches. They learn about the STEM scholars initiative and everything else we have to offer here. So it's about connecting with those resources, but even more importantly, connecting with each other, having like-minded peers that are with them along that race as they strive towards degree completion. So in addition to the outreach that we've done for our scholarships, So in addition to the outreach that we've done for our scholarships, students, we were monitoring their student success, and we are seeing that some of those initiatives far as providing them coaches and onboarding with Student Success Conference has paid off in the years, looking at the fall to winter, that box to the right, the fall to winter persistence, it's been hovering around ninety-five percent, which is very high compared to our, especially compared to our overall student population at the bottom at eighty-two percent, and then taking it a stretch further, looking at fall to fall, so one-year retention is at eighty-two percent compared to our overall first-year student population at sixty-three percent. And this is for our Presidential Proccesini and Excellence Scholars. Presidential Proccesini, they get the full tuition and the, and a book waiver, and in Excellence, they get three thousand dollars scholarship towards their semesters. And that's for all public high schools in Washtenaw County. So Alpha Scholars Initiative, this is a Title III grant, and we're in our second year of this initiative, and this is all about student support during the first year and beyond. So strengthening our institution with more coaching, advisors, and different engagement activities for students so they can stay here and persist. And we had one hundred and twenty-six students this year as Alpha Scholars. Our minority representation, representation in the Alpha Scholars has increased. Last year, during our first year, it was twenty-five percent minorities, and then thirty-four percent this year. The persistence rate is also pretty high for our Alpha Scholars as well, ninety-three percent overall compared to our all first-year students at eighty-two percent. And then the retention rate is at seventy-one percent compared to that sixty-three percent. So those initiatives that, through that Title III grant is paying off for our students to be staying and persisting here at the college. So looking at retention and graduation overall for all students, we're very happy to see that our graduation rate to the right is at twenty-eight percent. Back in 2017, we created the two, the twenty by twenty goal, and by 2020, we wanted to achieve a twenty percent graduation rate. And since then, we've been achieving that, so we're very happy to see that, and our retention and our persistent numbers have been on par as well to the left. Going on to our equity initiatives, and taking student success a little bit further, we're looking at the various different student groups and looking at those different identities. So it might be their age, their gender, their race, what do we, what do those student groups need to ensure their success and their access here at WCC? So as you all know, back in fall 2021, we launched the HBCU Pathway Initiative, and since then, we've had monthly empowerment sessions, and I really am happy about our empowerment sessions last fall. We highlighted mental health. That's something that students are very interested in on campus with everything going around in the world today. And, and for Black History Month, we also, we had another event today focusing on mental health, so we are continuing that. And for that specific event, we partnered some doctoral students at U of M that are in our psychology programs came and led these sessions. These doctoral students were also HBCU alumni as well. We also have study groups for our students. We started last semester partnering with our Learning Commons, and during Wednesday, students come and they study with like-minded peers during their semester. And sixty-one students that completed the HBCU Pathway Interest Form were actually enrolled last semester, and so we've been meeting with those students, checking in our status, seeing where they're at now, and then where their, their plans for after WCC, where they'd like to go. And in previous meetings, WCC, we received the Washtenaw Community Priority Fund, which is a grant from the county, and that grant is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And with that grant, we are able to, in addition to some of the things we'll do at Park Ridge, another half of that grant is more initiatives for our HBCU Pathway. So one is an HBCU Day here at Washtenaw County, here at Washtenaw Community College for the local school districts to come, and then we invite our HBCU partners up for that day so students can engage in our initiative that we have and learn how to transfer. And then we're going, we're going to do tours as well, so that funding will provide tours. It was mentioned at a prior, at the prior report last year, you know, we talked about doing some tours, and now we have the funding to go, to carry that out. So looking at our partners, we still have Jackson State, Mississippi Valley, Southern University, and Central State, but we're in deep conversations with these schools to the right, and I'm excited to say yesterday we received our MOU back from Tuskegee University, so it looks like they're going to be a partner pretty soon. We're finalizing that agreement right now. A few success stories. We've had seven students transfer to a school, to HBCU today, to date, and three of those students have received scholarships. Actually, one student recently graduated from North Carolina A&amp;T this past fall semester in psychology. She's now back, Caleb Ross, she's now back in town, and she's looking to go to physician assistant school, so she wants to be a physician assistant after, after, after grad school, so I'm in conversations with her about that right now. And then Elizabeth Pyramid is at Central State University. She was a WTMC alum. She's also honors, honors student there with a scholarship. So our CTE month, our CTE programming is also about equity as well. We're looking at those various path, there's high demand, high wage career pathways where, you know, there's underrepresentation of women, not only in the skills trades, but also in some of the STEM fields. So providing this path, this February month was, was CTE month, so providing more awareness on those pathways in all of our events that we see here. And then on the flip side, you may even notice that in, in feels like nursing, there's an underrepresentation of men in nursing. So it's about awareness of our coaches and all of our staff. We're, we've been promoting CTE month, so in addition to our outreach that we do in the community, when we talk about these pathways, we also encourage our students here on, here as well to consider these avenues. Another equity initiative is returning citizens. So last, 2022 Martin Luther King Celebration, we did focus on returning citizens, and we had actually Victoria, Victoria Harris Burden, the Assistant Chief, Assistant Washtenaw County Prosecutor as our keynote speaker last year. But, you know, that wasn't just a one-day thing. We wanted to take a step further, and we partnered with the Prosecutor's Office for an expungement fair, and we're taking it even a step further. We've joined alliance with Eastern Michigan University with the national, with the Navigation Returning Citizens AmeriCorps program, and with that program, our college, we get a success coach for returning citizens. But there's also success coaches across the county, at Washtenaw Literacy, at the Sheriff's Office, even at parole office. So, you know, all of these coaches work together to send, to send a returning citizen student to the various different resources on campus. So that coach here will guide them through the admissions process and then support them all the way through to two-degree completion. So we're going to touch on some of our inclusion initiatives, and with inclusion, we're just ensuring that, you know, this is a place where students feel like they belong, because if they feel like they belong, they're more likely to return. And Vincent Tinto said his best, he is a renowned researcher and instructor in higher ed. He was our keynote speaker for the Fall 2022 in-service, and he says, students who are connected to faculty, staff, and peers are engaged in extra, and are engaged in extracurriculars and in the campus community are more likely to be retained. So when we're talking about connecting students, that's an example of our Student Success Conference, and then engaged in extracurriculars. So a lot of our diversity program, getting them engaged in that, so, you know, they see something, and like a Black History Month or Women's History Month, and they identify with that, and then they're more likely to return because we value those unique differences and similarities. And there are studies as well to support Sense of Belonging Down Below. So this is our, our calendar of cultural heritage months right now, and we've, we've even added more to this calendar as well, but you'll see, you know, every month, there's a different theme, and some months, there's multiple themes. We're finishing out Black History Month. We, our last event for Black History Month will be this Thursday. It got postponed because of, you know, the, the rain and the ice, ice storm, but we are, we've, we've been, you know, having events just about every month on each of these cultural heritage months. And this more deeply, these are a few examples of those events, so each month has three events. We always kick it off in the first floor, the Student Center, just to tell student, staff, and faculty about, you know, the different cultural heritage months and provide, provide trivia, history on that culture, and then we have a film screening that might shed light on a success story or an issue in the community. So one example for Black History Month, we talked about voter suppression and what impact that's happened in that, having at the polls. Then we ended out with a community gathering where students can, and staff and faculty can learn about community resources that might support those various student groups with those identities. So with Sense of Belonging, it's important that we work together and encourage our staff and faculty to pursue professional development, so we provide DEI professional development, diversity, equity, inclusion professional development, just so staff can provide those safe and brave spaces for our students as well. So we have Christina Herbert, who's led several workshops on diversity, and then we've had several workshops in, in our in-service, and the, these next upcoming months, from March, April, and May, on the fourth, Thursday, we'll have a guest speaker facilitate a one-and-a-half-hour diversity, equity, inclusion training for our staff and faculty, virtually. And I would like to note that all of this is done, you know, because we need it, but also we've, you know, our, our faculty are also required to have two hours of diversity training as well, so this also helps them in those, meeting that, that requirement as well. These are a couple photos from one of our months, and this is for LGBT plus His, History Month, and one of our key partners is the library. They present a book cart relating to that, that month, that theme of different books, and students actually check these books out right on the spot to learn more and have some educational takeaways after that event. Last year was the first year we had the Minority Student Leadership Retreat, and it was a huge success. This was right before Thanksgiving break, and, you know, we had Professor Myron Coverton in our, out of our Communications Department lead a half-day seminar on communication and leadership, and then we had our staff and faculty do small group discussions with some of our students, and then at the end of the day, the students concluded out, concluded with having a development, the development and service project for Martin Luther King Celebration. And you'll see the, the students completed the survey at the end, and ninety-one percent strongly agreed that they felt like they were a part of a community at WCC, and a hundred percent of the students found the event to be beneficial. So we're looking to do this annually. Last year, we also had our first Juneteenth event, which was a great event. We had Professor Thornton Perkins as our keynote speaker, and Juneteenth is June nineteenth every year, and this symbolizes the end of slavery and the beginning of freedom for African American slaves, specifically the former African American slaves that were in Gouston, Texas during that time. We also had a student, a local student, no, a local resident that was here for the summer, but he attends the HBCU. He joined our celebration and, you know, did a musical selection. His mom actually was an alum of WCC, so she connected us with them. So for Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, we're happy that we expanded it from just one event to multiple events. We want to thank the Writing Center for partnering with us and the rest of the departments. And our, our focus for this year was Dr. King's quote, "Life's most persistent urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" So looking into that, we had Commissioner Caroline Sanders as our keynote speaker. She shed light on her personal journey, but also encouraged the audience to do service for others. And as you see, it was well attended, and we had WCC alum Kenyatta Rashan, who's now a recording artist, provide a musical performance before, during, and after the, the event. Additionally, we awarded our Equity in Action Awards, and we are very proud of our very own Shana Barker for the, the, the very important work towards equity with the emergency fund. Many students need these funds, but, you know, she's done this for plenty of years, so she's, you know, this is well pass over due for her to get this award. She's the Director of Scholarships, Alumni, and Emergency Funds. So the quote that her nominator said, "Shana gives so much of herself while working here, but even on her off days when she, she'll be relaxed, and she is still doing work to help students." Being the leader of the emergency fund, emergency fund, there is no days off for Shana because students' emergencies don't take a day off. We also provided the Equity in Action Award to the woman of Washtenaw co-chairs, Christina Doe and Cheryl Harvey, and then our community recipients were Torcoise Neal, Principal of Ypsilanti Middle School, and then Kalista Marie Sanders, the founder of Our Community So that service project that I mentioned, that the students planned during the Minority Student Leadership Retreat, was the Family and Community Day at Park Ridge, was, which was in January, a very great success. To, to the left, Mia Lanier-Durk, she really did a great job of leading the students from, all the way from Thanksgiving to January, propelling their success towards completing that project. You'll see a lot of youth in these pictures. They are engaging in activities to learn more about Dr. King's legacy. But also in these pictures, what you might not see is the adults, the adults, they didn't, they didn't just drop the, the youth off, they actually stayed there and actually connected with our resources. So forty-eight of, of the parents filled out a reconnect interest form, and eighteen of them applied to WCC at that event. So a few upcoming initiatives. Last year, we, just expanding our, our outreach for access, last year, we went to the Native American Powwow at Skyline High School, and this year, we're planning to do that again to make our presence known, and then to encourage the indigenous, indigenous populations about the opportunities that we have here at WCC. And then we have our Michigan Community College of Gender and Sexuality coming back. It's going to be back in person here in ML Saturday, April fifteenth, and we've expanded our committee on that to include other community colleges and universities to bring their students as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Wow. That was fabulous, and it, and it was. Any questions from the board?
Oh, cool. I, I just want to say that it, it's really speechless. Your report was so thorough, and I'm really impressed and pleased to hear what's been going on, and you're doing this constantly, it sounds like, and your staff, is that correct? Yeah. I, I like that you're out in the community. I like that you, you're involving the students in workshops and bringing people in. I mean, this is a really good, a good start in getting people who are not maybe of age yet, but they have parents who just might want to come back and say, I want to take classes so I can keep going on to become something, whatever it is. I, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Hatchet?
Yeah, this is a program, and it's wonderful. It represents a lot of hard work. I have a few suggestions. We have a alum, a faculty alum in Austin, Texas, who went to Prairie View, and I suspect he'd be very interested in connecting with any initiatives regarding Prairie View. We used to tease him about losing football games all the time, but he's quite loyal to Prairie View. His name is Alvin Roberts, and he taught, I don't know, sociology, psychology for a long, long time, so it's someone to contact down there. Some ideas, I'm glad to see that you're doing cultural things across the spectrum of ethnicities. And something I saw at another school was a, a monthly kind of bulletin that showed what holidays and, and so forth were coming up for different communities, and what to say to those people. What do you say to someone who's celebrating Eid? What do you not say to someone who's celebrating Eid? A kind of monthly report on what do you do if you go to a Powwow, you know? What do you say? It might be useful for a lot of people. And finally, it occurred to me that most of the things that you're doing, we could be doing for hiring faculty and staff.
I agree.
In terms of minorities and inclusion, I wrote down, you know, we could give new staff book funds, and we could give them scholarships to take classes somewhere, and we could provide them with coaches and have a welcome day for them, and have a job fair here for minorities who might want to work here rather than students who... So I'm, I'm, I'm sort of combining your office with HR and with all the other ones and my, and marketing to do the same thing, sort of as a cultural change for the college. We're all doing this. We're all recruiting minorities. We're all wanting them to stay. We're all wanting them to succeed, whether they're working here, whether they're students here. Am I making any sense?
I was on the same, thinking on the same line too, so I'm glad... So I'm glad to hear that you're saying it as well.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so much of what you're doing is transferable to life.
It is.
I just want to piggyback real quick. This, last year, we just, actually, yeah, last year, the Association of Community College Trustees adopted two Indian reservations that have community, they have their own community college, and so they're a part of our association now. So instead of twenty-eight community colleges in the state of Michigan, there's thirty. And I think this was a really good time, you know, somehow or another, because I, I've always seen low rates for, actually, Indians used to be really not even on the paper, maybe one. Asians were a little bit higher, used to be higher, and Hispanics were always low also. So I think I know about the Hispanics a little bit, but they're here. And so where are they? And that, that's the whole point, you know? How, how do we reach out to these people that seem invisible, but they're here?
Any others? President Blanca?
Excellent report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
Go ahead.
It's just a suggestion, but you use the phrase "race" often. And I would sort of like our students to think more of ethnicities than race, since race doesn't really exist. And so if we keep using that phrase, then it, it supports that concept. It's just, you know, it's a weird thing, but you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Reed. Appreciate you. It was very well, very well put together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the CCAT, the CCAT Grant Impact and Grant Renewal by VP Mueller and Director, forgive me, I'm not quite sure on how to pronounce your last name.
Lees.
Lees, okay. And VP Tucker.
Good evening, trustees, and thank you for allowing us to speak to you this evening. I'm here with my colleagues, Brandon Tucker and Al Lees. And we're going to talk to you tonight about the impact and the renewal of the Center for Connected and Automated Transportation Grant. About seven years ago, believe it or not, the University of Michigan submitted a U.S. Department of Transportation grant proposal to create the Center for Connected and Automated Transportation. At the time that U of M was preparing the proposal, Al Lees and myself met with U of M Transportation Research Institute administrators to pitch the idea of including Washtenaw Community College as a partner. And we would focus on the development of workforce education and training, understanding that the new and incumbent workforce would need to be trained using new technologies that were transforming the industry. We were able to convince them that no one can do it better than Washtenaw Community College. And I'm proud to say that we were able to convince them. And as a result of that, we became the only community college partner on the Midwestern Transportation Grant that was awarded by the U.S. Department of Transportation. So we had great company, the University of Michigan, Central State University out of Ohio, Illinois Center for Transportation out of Urbana-Champaign, Purdue University, the University of Akron, and Washtenaw Community College. When we talked to the University of Michigan, we talked to them about four key pillars that we could centralize all of our activities around as part of this grant. And the grant was for $750,000 for the community college as a partner for six years. And those four pillars were development and delivery of curriculum, education, training, equipment acquisition, to be able to support the new emerging technologies and what was, what we were creating to be able to deliver into the labs and the classrooms, student industry engagement, where we would participate in events, students would participate in events for paid internships and scholarships, and finally outreach, where we would build K through twelve capacity. And we would do also external awareness, local, state, regional, and national awareness types of activities and marketing. At this point, I'll turn it over to Al Lees.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening. I wanted to just show you some of the equipment worth over $350,000 that were used in this grant, and many of them were industry recommended. As you can see in the larger view, there's the Automotive Cybersecurity Educator from the GRIM Corporation that was instrumental in Dean Eva Samolsky's programs. And right above it is the UMLot Corporation-recommended Automotive Cybersecurity workstation on a smaller scale, again, also in the Automotive Cybersecurity Lab today from Dean Eva. And right at the top, you're going to see some oscilloscopes that were in Dean Jimmy Baber's transportation technology area, and some other equipment used in the automotive diagnostics. And for the K through twelve, we had simulated cars and Lego storms that would give K through twelve students the opportunity to look at vehicle connectivity, object detection, and automation in terms of the concepts going into real full-size vehicles today. Here are some of the metrics. The programs developed fourteen over the full six-year period. Courses developed twenty-one. Training modules developed seventy-two. There's the total equipment again of 353,150. Total students impacted 6,859. And the external outreach activities conducted 463. And I'd like to turn it over to Brandon.
So the major reason why we're coming to you today is because it's been renewed for five years. And you'll notice that there are a number of new partners, Northwestern University, Wisconsin, but there still remains only one community college. Keeping with the themes that we've done over the last six years, we're going to still focus on development and capacity building, both from a non-credit and a credit perspective, specifically in our Transportation Technologies Department around connected and autonomous transportation, intelligent transportation systems, continuing our work with cybersecurity, and of course, automotive communications. But then also looking at how we can continue to increase our amount of professional development offerings for existing workers in the field and those looking to enter into the field. But then recognizing that we must build the pipeline through high schools and middle schools. We're going to continue to do outreach there with a special emphasis this year on underserved and rural communities. So we've started some work at Park Ridge. They've been having a blast, but also looking to see how can we increase the number of minorities and underserved, and those even limited to the rural side of Washtenaw County, knowing oftentimes they won't be exposed to this type of training in their classrooms. And then, of course, continuing to represent the college across the region at different events, but then also looking at how we can engage our students. You heard from Dean Reed around a successful CTE month in February, looking to not only expose those students who are in the mobility sector programs, but making sure that everyone is aware of the technology that is not just coming, but is already here. With that, will answer any questions that you might have?
Jeez, any comments? Trustee McKnight-Morden?
I know this is just out of the, the norm here, but if, Mr. Lees, could you give a background to some of the board members, especially our new person of yourself, and how you're connected with the college? Well, we do have a new board member, so that's one mentioning it.
Let me understand. Do you want to know?
Some of your background.
I'm a graduate of the University of Michigan College of Engineering, Aerospace Engineering. I worked in the aerospace industry for about three years, and then I went to work for the Ford Motor Company for thirty-seven years in powertrain engineering. I came to Washtenaw Community College right after my retirement from Ford to work on the Community-Based Jobs Training Grant under the Bush Administration, where Washtenaw was the lead college with eight other colleges as partners. And we developed capacity building at five of the nine colleges, including Washtenaw. We trained 4,509 students in newly-developed curricula and with new equipment. We received a letter of appreciation from the U.S. Department of Labor. The process of running a grant with nine colleges involved developed a process of communication and collaboration that resulted in the formation of the Workforce Intelligence Network of Southeast Michigan, otherwise known as WIN. I worked at WIN as the Employer Strategies Manager for roughly four years. And then President Blanca and Michelle called me to head up the Advanced Transportation Center here as the director. And I've enjoyed my tenure here. So that's a brief overview of my background. Thank you.
Trustee Hatcher?
I just wanted to comment on, and maybe we can try to make this a policy, because today we did with affirmative action and diversity inclusion, but your presentation highlighted what we're doing for minority students as well. And I think every presentation should do that. Does that make sense? We should always be conscious of what we're doing in that realm as a community college.
I don't think they could hear you.
You can't hear me?
I can hear.
Okay.
I can hear you now.
I just thought that every presentation ought to include something about their responsibility for diversity and inclusion for students and staff. Every presentation. But thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Trustee Hatcher, any other comments, questions? Trustee Alex?
So I've had the opportunity to visit the center here and see what we were doing with Advanced Transportation and the work that you're doing here, which is phenomenal. I've also accompanied several tours that have happened here on campus, and everyone is always shocked by it, that it's actually happening here on campus. So I would love to see you work with our marketing department, because they're doing such a great job, and we're giving them a lot of work. And I'd like to add one more item for them to do, and that's to market what you're doing here, because it's a big deal that we're the only community college. But I feel like many of our community members have no idea what's actually happening with the work that you're doing here. So I think it's really important that it's fully marketed as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our monthly report, tab B, the Personnel Recommendation. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the Personnel Recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Both.
Second.
Second and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There any questions for VP Schwick? Schwick, do you have anything that you need to add? Okay, thank.
I'd just like to thank Gloria Eccleson for helping make our online program one of the best in the state while she's been here for, what, twenty-two years? And thanks to all the people who've been here for more than twenty years. There's several on this list. Thank you.
I move we accept this report on personal recommendations as submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's been accepted. Thank you. Moving on to the financial reports for tab C. Before we vote on the financial report by Executive Director Hunholz, excuse me, if I messed up your last name, I apologize, is there anything you would like to add to highlight for us?
No, thank you, and you pronounced it very well, so thank you very much. I am Ben Hunholz. For those of you that haven't met me, is that better?
Much better.
Sorry about that. You did a great job pronouncing it. I am Executive Director Hunholz, and I am filling in for VP Barnes this evening. I'd just like to highlight a couple of things on your financial report here. In general, the themes that you've heard for the first six months of the fiscal year have continued into January. You will note, the, the board will note that our winter tuition here is largely settled, and we are positive compared to budget by approximately $700,000. A note on spring, our registration opens here in a couple of weeks, and we will see that number start to move with our March month-end numbers. Local property taxes continue to tread ahead of budget, although we do consider about half of that positive variance to be timing in nature. We do expect to end the year at about 1.2 million positive variance to budget. And then one more further note here on the revenue section, investment income is continuing to tread positively, given the current interest rate environment. We expect that, that positive variance to budget to end the year at, at least 1.1 million positive variance to budget. On the cost side, the themes have continued. You can see here we are approximately 5.6 million positive variance to budget. Some of that is timing, the rest of it is a mix of both personnel and non-personnel. One more item to note here, for the Health and Fitness Center, you will see that we have not done a transfer yet, but the center is doing well. Membership is continuing to return, and we do anticipate making that $500,000 transfer in the, the remaining quarters here for the fiscal year. That's all I really wanted to highlight. I would certainly answer any questions that the board had.
Questions from the trustees? No? Okay.
I move we accept the financial reports for the General Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds as submitted.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, moving on to tab D, the Facilities Development Report by VP Beschi.
I'll begin with deferred maintenance projects and just highlight some of the current projects that are in process right now. We replaced this month three of the existing, the original charging stations that are in the parking structure. These three were original, put back in about twelve, 2012, so a little over ten years. Replaced, is that better? Okay. We, we replaced them with a Level Two charging station, so they're more efficient and, and up to date. The charging stations that we use are by ChargePoint, and what we have right now is in this parking structure. We have a number of designs going on right now with charging stations, both for fleet charging, for our fleet of EV vehicles that we're going to move towards, as well as concepts for public charging stations. And as a result that, a result of that, we are going to do an RFP for charging stations. Some of the manufacturers that we were looking at are NLX Juicebox, Siemens, Ready, which is a Detroit-based charging manufacturing, and Trinium. Those are just a few of the manufacturers that we're going to look at. This month, we also replaced the transformer at the Damon Flowers Building. The old transformer was starting to leak oil, and at the end of its useful life, this transformer should last ten to twenty years. I'm sorry, twenty to thirty years. Boiler controls upgrade is a project that has been ongoing for about three years. I think we kicked this off at Phase One in 2021 with replacement of the controls to boiler two. In 2022, we replaced an upgrade to the boiler controls to Number Three, and also installed a Plantmaster controller. And then finally, in this spring of 2023, we're going to do the final boiler control upgrade. The college has three boilers, two that we run primarily in the winter that are 600 horsepower. They're capable of, each are capable of basically providing 100% of the heat. One's redundant, we switch them back and forth each month. And then the smaller boiler, we operate in the summer. The gist of the boiler control upgrade was we moved away from an old technology of called single-point positioning combustion control to a auto flame and VFD. What that really means is the old boilers came on, operated at 100%, turned off, came back on, turned off, they would cycle on and off. The new boilers operate in a veritable frequency modular state, so they ramp up from zero to 100%. They very seldom cycle on and off, and it's a much more efficient way to operate them. The result of this is about a 5% reduction in fuel consumption and about a 10% reduction in CO2 emissions. And here's what the boiler controls look like in the master controls panel. Quick update on the sanitary main replacement project. The final design came in this week. We have an RFP that's going out for the construction of it. We have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for the 6th of March. Bids are due in on the 17th of March, and the goal is to come to the board meeting on March 28th with a decision or discussion and possible action to award a contract to have that forced, new forced sanitary main installed. Moving on to the campus repairs and maintenance, as we plan for fiscal year 24, we're going to plan for it and start to use this fund more for campus planned maintenance projects as opposed to emergencies. And then finally, there are no contracts exceeding $20,000 issued in the past thirty months, or thirty days to report on. And that concludes my report. Questions?
Any questions from the board? Trustee Hatcher.
I may not be reading this right, but in Number 21, a charging station costs $33,000? Is that what that means? That there were three and it was $100,000?
You refer to Project Number 21, EV charging?
Yeah.
And your question again?
They were each $33,000?
We have budgeted $100,000 in this project. It really consists of three different things. One is a replacement of the three EV charging stations that we just replaced in the parking structure. That's one project. And then it's to cover the design for the charging stations that are going to go into the car barn area to support a academic program. And then the third is to do a comprehensive design for public, well, fleet and public charging stations. So there's really three projects rolled into that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'm kind in that same area. I am in that same area, kind of. So you're replacing three charging stations? So you already have three charging stations?
We have a total of twelve.
Okay. So three of them are non-functional?
Three were outdated, and we upgraded them. We had issues, they weren't as efficient, they were older model, the original model charging stations, so we replaced them with a Level Two station that's more efficient, that charges them quicker, and now we have a total of twelve in the parking structure.
So will there be more coming down the pipe?
Yes. Well, so we're in the process right now of designing charging stations at the car barn that will support a academic program, that instructional program for maintaining batteries and charging stations. We're also designing to install charging stations at the SRB building over by the maintenance garage to handle our fleet, that we are facilities in the college is moving towards electric vehicles. We ordered two this month, and so we're migrating our gasoline and diesel-powered trucks and mowers and equipment over to EVs, so we're designing for that. And we're also looking at two large concepts for public stations. One would be a centralized plant where we, or plant where we would have upwards of fifty charging stations in one area of campus, in kind of one area of one lot, and a decentralized station that would have fifty scattered about. So we're looking at the pros and cons of that type of design concept.
Okay. So eventually, you're going to have the parking, public parking with EV stations?
I'm sorry.
Are we, are you preparing for public parking EV stations?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And that's part of the fifty you're talking about?
Upward, yeah. So we're right now in the process of designing to put an infrastructure in that would, that would grow to upwards of fifty charging stations for the public.
Okay. So when we do that, then there will be some spaces for the handicap?
Absolutely.
More than two?
The handicap is really dictated by planning local and, you know, Ann Arbor townships. So we provide handicapped spaces as required.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, so the budget will be, we'll be seeing more of these hundred thousands coming in for more EVs, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Trustee DeVarty?
Yes, I'd like to follow up. The charging stations in the parking structure right now, those are available to the public, correct?
They are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to remarks. Remarks of the Members of the Board of Trustees. Vice Chair Milliken?
Thank you. President Blanca led several of us to Washington, DC early this month. Hill visits are something that nonprofits and trade associations around the country do periodically through the year, and this was Community College National Legislative Summit week that we attended, and the objective is for us from the field to go to Washington and talk to our elected representatives and tell them on the ground what's going on, how it's going, what we need. Pell Grants and legislation for Dreamers, and the community college legislative people make up talking points for us so that we're talking in unison. And we had some quality time with a lot of people out there. There was a general session that began on Monday morning with Agriculture Secretary Vilsack speaking to us, talking about the SNAP program, and Secretary used to be the governor of Iowa, and prior to that, he was the mayor of Mount Pleasant, Iowa. And they came out and introduced him that morning and said, "Welcome, we're glad to have you all here, and now I want to introduce the mayor of Mount Pleasant, Iowa." And Secretary Vilsack came out, got a good roar from the House, but he was very well-spoken. But a lot of you here would have enjoyed Senator Pete Buttigieg, who followed him and spoke extemporaneously for forty-five minutes, very thoughtful. And you may or may not know that Secretary Buttigieg is now a Traverse City, Michigan resident, and so he was our hometown boy. We're all proud to see him there. But he pointed out very articulately that the biggest federal investment ever in transportation is underway currently, and there are billions of dollars that have been appropriated. They represent eighteen-hundred projects around the United States right now in transportation and in infrastructure. And an example of that, I don't know of one in Ann Arbor, but we well have one, is I-375 in Detroit, which, when it was first put in in the 60s, went right through a vibrant neighborhood, displaced everybody. It's a great, big concrete canyon, and they've appropriated $100 million to pull I-375 out of there and to turn it into a tree-lined landscaped boulevard, so it'll add to the quality of life in the city. But those are the kinds of priorities that the Department of Transportation under Secretary Buttigieg is undertaking. And he, as you might imagine, is a real proponent of EVs. And so, Michelle, with your comments, and everybody, Al, everybody tonight, you would love to have been in the House to hear what he was saying about how community colleges are where the EV skilled workforce is going to come from. They're relying on us. We've got a role in this all around the United States to accommodate this wave of EV consumers and users that are coming forward. Last year, if you were to go to market and look for an EV, you had your choice of about a dozen different models. This year, you now have about seventy-five EV models to look at, and that number is going to continue to soar. So all the things we've heard tonight about CCAT and the infrastructure to support it is coming, it's important, and we're already on board, as we've heard tonight, but we need to keep up that good work. And Secretary Buttigieg, who knows, maybe we'll get him here sometime to see the good work that we're doing. But it was a pleasure to be in the House and have that chance to expand our horizons. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee DeVarty?
I'd like to follow up on Trustee Milliken's comments and point out that one of the biggest things that the Association of Community College Trustees emphasize as a high priority is to make available short-term Pell Grants that could support students taking shorter-term, short-term programs that we offer here, certificates and training that some of the employers we partner with are asking us for. And right now, the students can't use Pell Grant funding for that. So we had very positive conversations with a number of legislative staff people from both parties, Democrats and Republicans, and had very strong support from the people we've met with. One of the member, one of the staff members we met with is a staff person for a Republican congressperson nearby to the community college, who the staff person actually went to Washtenaw Community College and knows from his own experience how powerful the training we offer can be. And the staff here, the administrative staff gave us some very good data that we were able to present to the legislators that showed the kind of salaries that people in these short-term programs can qualify for. And it was very remarkable, the reception that the legislators and their staff people gave us in presenting that data. And I'm hopeful that the staff will continue to be available to legislative staff, congressional staff. I think we could really see this year, because both, members of both parties are supportive of doing this kind of thing for community colleges. They see us as a resource.
Anyone else? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd just like to bug you all about thinking about honorary degree recipients. We should be starting to talk about that next month, and as Linda Blakely's office bugged me all the time for faculty speakers, I'm going to be bugging you all the time for honorary recipients. So give it a thought.
Will do. Anyone else?
I would like to say, at my SIMCOG meeting, it was announced that Senator Peters is, has a community project in there, he's asking for a request, and I think there's, all I know is millions of dollars, but it's, the request is due by March 14th, and you have to contact Senator Peters. And I think we are in the community, especially over in the Park Ridge area, so other areas that we can think about, someone can think about, if you don't already have it, to request this money, because I know other cities, townships, and whatever else is going to be asking for it.
Ready for the President's remarks?
Well, thank you. Good evening. A good meeting tonight. Thank you for a great discussion, a lot of good suggestions. I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to thank the trustees that went to Washington, DC, because, and Trustee Fleming went, Trustee Diana McKnight-Morton, Vice Chair Milliken, as well as Treasurer DeVarty accompanied Vanessa Brooks and myself. And it is a very, I want to thank you because we do good work there, but it's not a vacation, okay? I just want to make sure everyone understands that we are working up and actually lobbying for what's right for our students and trying to get what we need. And I'd like to thank, you know, the people that gave us the information that we needed to present, as Trustee DeVarty mentioned, and that would be Linda Blakely's area, then Linda providing all that information we needed, as well as our marketing staff. So thank you so much, because that was very helpful. I'm really proud about our Fulbright Scholars. So two things this month that were just for me, that was really eye-opening and a great feeling. One is that CCAT grant being, still being one of the colleges with all those universities, meaning the only community college. I just want to thank everyone for that. And I'd also like to thank you, Jimmy Bieber Dean, because you are working with those students, as well as Dean Simolsky. Thank you so much for all the work that you do in your areas to keep promoting what we do in the area of CCAT. Thank you so much. But also, being a top producer of Fulbright Awards for 2022, and again, we are only one of twelve community colleges nationally, and that's a lot, that's really something to be proud of. Now, why am I proud of that? Not because we're one of twelve colleges nationally, but because when one of our students goes and applies for a job or transfers to a school, I would like that employer or that transfer office to say, you know, like if you went to Yale or something, or U of M, "Oh, you went to Washtenaw Community College." That's why all of this is important, because it helps our students become recognized when they go out to get a job or to transfer or to their employer. So that's why I'm extremely thrilled about those things. Steam Week, again, is very exciting. It's coming up. I'd like to thank Susan Dentel and, of course, interim Vice President Vega for Steam Week, and those activities are up and coming. Economic Club, this is the best one in March. Wait, I shouldn't have said that. I take that back. They're all great. This one is the one that is the most, probably have the most visitor, right, guests in this one, because this one has to do with the economic forecast. And so, trustees, I encourage all of you, if you can, it's March 14th. If you can attend, that's one, that's great. And lastly, and I think that we've mentioned that- And lastly, and I think that we've mentioned them without me even having to say a word, and I'd like to thank you, I've asked the media, I've asked the PR department and marketing department to start including in my board memo, information about all the hits that we get and all the places that we are acknowledged. Again, why is that important? Yes, enrollment, for sure. But again, that name out there, our name, Washtenaw Community College, is something that our students need to be proud of, and I'm proud that we can do that. So I'd like to join the trustees that thanked you all night tonight, Vice President, what's her name now? Mu Chong? How could I forget? I'm sorry, because she's on speed dial. And your team, thank you so much, Fran, back there, thank you so very, very much, and your whole team for what you do for us. Thank you.
Okay. Great things are happening. All right, we're moving on to a new business. We have a few tabs that are up for discussion, first being Tab E, the Parking Structure 10-Year Maintenance Program by VP Beschi.
For discussion is the Parking Structure 10-Year Maintenance Program. Little background, the parking structure was completed in 2012. In 2017, the college contracted with Walker Consultants, and they reviewed the condition of the parking structure. As a result of that, they gave us a five-year and a 10-year recommendation for maintenance. In 2022, I mean, sorry, in 2018, we completed the five-year maintenance program, and today we are ready, or at a point where we need to complete the 10-year maintenance program. Scope of the work really involves repairing the expansion joints, caulking, grouting, sealing the joints. There's selected areas that need wall and floor repairs. The entire four levels will get a concrete sealer, and then new pavement markings, which are directional arrows, crosswalks, parking space stripings. The objective of all this work is really to waterproof the deck and to prevent water from seeping down and getting into the concrete, so it can't rust and corrode the, well, we have a post-tension cabling system. So the strength of the concrete is from a post-tension system, and what we do not want is water to get down into that area and corrode the system, that would shorten the life of the parking deck. We did an RFP that resulted or yielded two responsive bidders. There was about a 96, $100 swing or difference between the low, between the two bids. This work would be performed between, between May 8th and June 2nd. During that time, the parking structure would be offline and closed. We have a budget and our deferred maintenance of $160,000 for this project. The low bid came in at $127,000. So it is the college recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with RAM in the amount of $127,000. Questions?
Trustee DeVarty.
When I was on the Ann Arbor Downtown Development Authority, we had to, over the course of a number of years, go back and go after, we had to actually replace some parking structures because prior to us forming and starting to work on this stuff, maintenance wasn't done. Deferred maintenance was not taken care of, and it did result in deterioration of the structures. This is the kind of thing I strongly support. It's very smart for us to invest this money to prevent having to spend much more money later. And, but the one thing I'm looking at, the low bidder that you're recommending, there are some alternates here, and it strikes me that, except for the clean the facade, all those line items in that, in that alternate, in the alternates, are things we probably should be doing as well. And there's about $36,000 additional dollars there. Is, are you, is there a reason you're not recommending that we fund? And since we've budgeted for that amount of money, shouldn't we do those alternates as well with this low bidder?
Very good point. It's an excellent point. And we, you know, we should. I mean, the cleaning of the facade is something that really could be rebid and done at a later time to get an apples-to-apples quote on that. So if there's...
Would you be open to amending this before we bring it back next month, or that I would put it on the table tonight to amend it, to add the alternates, except for the cleaning of the facade? Because even with that additional money, we come in right near what we've pre, what we've budgeted for.
I would, I would be in favor of that.
I would be in favor of that also. I just want to ask a technical question. Does this have to be rebid then?
No, it's in the bid.
Oh, it's in the bid?
Because they bid, there were, are two aspects of the bid, and the second aspect is alternates. So those are additional items that we could choose to add into the scope of the work as the, as the people that are asking for it to be done. And I'm just thinking, we should add it into the work, because now's the time to do it.
I would agree. Great point.
Vice Chair Milliken.
I'm all in favor of that. Sounds prudent to me. Can you tell us how much surface parking we've got at Washtenaw Community College and what the capacity of the structure is, round numbers?
Can you repeat that question?
Our parking capacity at Washtenaw Community College? How big is the structure? How much surface parking do we have on campus?
I'm gonna wing, I mean, I believe it's around 3,400 spaces total.
And the capacity of the deck?
That I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, next month, maybe we can get that number on the table.
I will provide that. I do know, I think, overall, we have about, just right around 3,400 spaces total.
Thank you. Good.
Is this something that we can wait to approve next month? Or I know that it says if moved to action, a roll call vote will be taken. Would it be helpful for us to approve this tonight, if we're going to, so we could get the responsible bidder on, in their timeline? Because I know contractors right now are really tight on their scheduling.
That is true. Yes, it would be great if we could approve it tonight. We would like to, or, you know, we would like to issue this contract, get him under contract, just low bidder, and get us on the schedule for the work to begin on May 8th.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Yes.
I'd move to...
I, I, what a question. Just, just a quick question. Walker Consultants is from where?
They're local.
Are they local? That's what I'm trying to find out.
They are from what, southeast. They, I'm not sure if they're from Washtenaw County, but they are from southeast Michigan.
Okay. In, in the proposal, you sent out how many to come up with this one? Or this was before you got here, I bet?
Well, we, we worked with them, because they're experts in the field of parking structures and concrete maintenance, Walker Consultant. And then they provided the specifications for the work, and then we did do in both 2018 and again in 2022, an RFP that was posted on the Washtenaw County website for contractors, for anybody to bid on.
Okay. Then the question I'm, really, I should have said before, any minorities with this company? Minorities with this company?
Again, we post on the website for Michigan contractors, and anybody is entitled to or welcome to bid.
Yeah, I'm talking about this company. I'm talking about Walker Consultants. Are there any minorities with this company?
I can't answer that.
So was it in the proposal then, the RFP?
I, that, that was done prior to my start in that Washtenaw Community College. I just know that we used them back in 2012 or in 2017 to provide us with maintenance, but I don't know the questions.
Well, you know, I'm getting to the point where we used to have in RFPs with, with asking the, the companies, do they have any minorities or not? And, I mean, that's just a simple question to ask, and it's either yes or no. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. And I know you go according to the bid number, and I understand that. But I think it would be for, I don't know about the rest of the board, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I would like to start seeing that again, because I think that's absent. And I know that the state of Michigan is doing that now, not including our minorities in a part of the bid process. I think that we need to have that, because there are minority contractors out here, and we used, on this campus, we used to have minorities, and they, with that company, and they would use our local laborers. That's, that's where I'm going.
May I speak?
President Blanca?
Yes, Trustee McKnight-Morton, you're making a very good point. I don't believe that, you know, that really Ben Hunhold's, I mean, we do have, I'm looking at Ben, we do have it in our purchasing. Could you speak, Ben, to that? Because I'm, I'm sure that we...
So, so we do ask for ownership of all of companies, for all of our bids, are they minority-owned or woman-owned? We also do ask for a responsible contractor form to be filled out. That does ask a host of questions. We can't legally ask for, what is your minority percentage of employees? We can't use that to determine a bid. But I do know that the purchasing dean does try to solicit bids to minority contractors. We're a member of the Michigan Minority Business Council, so we do try to solicit those bids. I haven't talked with our purchasing director about this in, in quite a while, but I do know that there are a number of initiatives that they're trying to do to increase minority participation in our construction bids.
I certainly appreciate knowing how far you go, not right away, but at least, you know, because we used to do that. And I, I know times change, but not, it doesn't change that much that everything is, like, erased out. I would like to see it penciled back in.
We will certainly come back to you with some more information on that.
Thank you very much.
Trustee?
So I have a question in regards to our parking lot, and especially the parking structure. So as I drive past campus and when I am on campus, although I'm not here at every single hour of the day, I notice that, you know, the parking lots are not full, you know, due to COVID, you know, students are choosing other avenues for learning, whether it's virtual or whatever they're choosing. But then, you know, during one of the recent snowstorms, I noticed a salt truck salting an area of the parking lot that I know for a fact, at least the times that I drive by, is empty. And speaking with regards to the parking structure, you know, the very top of it, you know, obviously, salt is not good for, for the structure there. So are we, and the other part I'll add to it is, I've seen a lot of commercial properties where they've literally shut off parts of their parking lots that are not being utilized. The building where I'm located on State Street, we have a parking structure, they closed off the top floor of the parking structure. Are we doing anything to that effect in order to maintain our, you know, investment in our parking lots if they're not being currently utilized?
Are you speaking in terms of limiting closing access to a level or two?
The top level of the parking structure, and then also just various parking lots on campus, you know, parts of parking, parking lots, so that you're not salting and cleaning areas that aren't being utilized right now?
No. I mean, obviously, whether, like we said in the last call, we, we salt the parking lots. We do salt, you know, as needed, and the main parking lots that are obviously not covered do get, you know, salt.
But has there been any consideration with shutting parts of parking lots down that are not being utilized, so that you're not wasting resources on...
We could look at that, that, you know, certainly an idea of something that has merit that we, but to my knowledge, we have not done that at this point. And from my experience since I've been here, now that we've really returned mostly back to normal from COVID, there's days on, you know, Mondays and Wednesdays, when on afternoon the parking lot is probably 80-plus percent filled, so.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVarty.
I'd like to move this item, Tab E, recommendation to approve a contract, replacement contract with RAM for action tonight.
Support?
You opposed? All right, so what do...
That's a roll call vote.
I'm sorry?
That'll be a roll call.
Can we have a roll call, Vanessa?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
Yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Trustee DeVarty?
I'd like to propose an amendment to what's before us to increase the amount not to exceed from $127,000 to $166,000. And I get that by looking at the alternates in the bid responses and backing out the clean the facade, which is $30,400 roughly, and then adding the $31,000 remaining, and actually, I'm adding a little bit extra. And I'd like to propose that we put that not to exceed at, let's see, 37, or let's see, 37,160, to $166,000. And I think that should adequately cover all those alternates, except for the cleaning of the facade.
A lot for support?
You opposed? Vanessa, can you call the roll?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
So that was a vote on an amendment. So now it's an amended resolution, and now we have the, a vote for the full action.
Have a...
A vote on the resolution as amended.
Support.
You. Can we call the roll again?
Yes. Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Millschain?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I want to just say, I think that it would be a good idea to cut off, look into cutting off some of the areas in the parking, surface parking area around the campus, because my bill, my office building also does that as well. So that, that's a good tab to put in your notes there. So moving on, yeah, oh, trust, Vice Chair Milliken?
And add on to that, there's environmental consideration too of excess saltage, is that a word? And, so if we, thank you. So if we determine that there's a lot of unused space and we cordoned it off, we'll also help the environment by not throwing all that salt out there.
Good point. Okay, Storage and Receiving Building Roof Restoration, VP Beschi.
For discussion is the Storage and Receiving Building Roof Restoration. The objective of this project is to properly clean and prepare the entire roof over the shipping and receiving building, so that we can apply an metallic coating for rustproofing and weatherproofing purposes. Scope of the work or the steps, the process involved is to power wash the roof and clean out of debris, replace any loose or missing fasteners, go through and caulk, seal all the seams on the standing seam roof, make repairs to the gutters, replace pipe boots, which are devices that we use when we penetrate the roof. which are devices that we use when we penetrate the roof with pipes or vents. And then apply one coat of an Illumination 301 at a, sprayed on at a rate of two gallons per hundred square feet. The RFP process yielded three responsive bidders. The second closest bid was about $32,000 above the low bid. Project for this was budgeted at $150,000. The low bid came in at $122,000. And so it is the college's recommendation that the board approve a contract with Schreiber Roofing in the amount of $122,000.
Any questions or comments from the board? Trustee DeBardi?
Just looking at the bidders, it looks like the low bidder is proposing to do the work in the summer, so this doesn't look like something that's of urgency to pass tonight. We could wait till March. I'm not sure.
We would prefer to have it done over the summer, so the timing with that particular bidder worked well.
Do you need it approved tonight, or would March work?
I'm sorry?
Would a March approval work on this?
Yeah, we don't need it. This is just for discussion. We can take an action next month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other trustees?
I would like to say thank you for presenting the information to us. I have a suggestion, and I know this is something that would not be needed all the time, but in reference to the parking structure for the maintenance and for the roof restoration, if there is something, if and when there is something that requires extensive work, perhaps a few photos could be provided to help, I don't want to speak for everyone, but it would help us to get a visual on what it is that we're actually up against when it comes to recommending to have the approval of X amount of dollars to complete a project. I don't park in a parking structure. And when I come on campus, if I need to go to the public safety building or office, excuse me, I just park on the surface street, surface lot. So I don't know what the parking structure looks like on the inside. You do, and the folks that work here and utilize that structure, they do. So, or what the roof looks like, because none of us go on the roof but you guys. So just to kind of give us some highlight photos, it could be one or two, but not something that could be done all the time, but just give us a heads up, okay, this is what it looks like, and this is why I'm asking for it.
We have to do that in the future.
Thank you so much.
All right. So if there aren't any other things, okay, then we can move on to Tab G, Recommendation for New Programs for 2023-24, interim VPI Vega.
Good evening. Can you hear me well?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First time here. So I'm going to try to be brief as possible, and the concept is actually rather simple. We were trying to propose a new degree program in the area of associate applied science in digital media arts and two certificates attached to the actual program. And a quick overview of the Department of Digital Media Arts, they actually have about six disciplines, which is animation, graphic design, photography, audio production and engineering, digital video, web design and development. And after the faculty and Dean Zamalski consulted with their advisory groups and their advisory boards and recent graduates, they realized that actually, these programs, students are better served by having a degree in digital media arts in their transcripts and in their actual degree, rather than just a degree in occupational studies. So that's sort of the motivation to having this degree. So we are really not increasing the number of credits, we're not adding new courses, we're just simply restructuring, restructuring the existing courses and programs we have to make it more. Because this program particularly, as you can see, is actually workforce-ready for students to go out there into the workforce if they choose to do so. In terms of the, oh, I have to add that actually, if, as you can see on the program requirements, the beauty of the program is that actually, the electives that are restrictive in the area are all under digital arts. So in other words, the students can tailor their program to what they're choosing is under the same area. In terms of the two certificates, the traditional photography certificate, which is embedded certificate into the program, actually is more tailored to students that are actually going more so to transfer to a four-year degree institution. That's what it's tailored to. I mean, it's not unique for transfer, but it's tailored for students to complete their associate degree and transfer to a four-year institutions. And it's 13 credit hours, as you see, four courses. And the subsequent, or the portrait photography, is more so tailored for students to go into the industry right away, into the digital arts. And again, all these things were in conjunction with the faculty and advisory groups and professionals in the industry. Any questions?
I think it's great. I took photography in high school, and I've got a new camera, it's digital, and I don't know how to work it, so this would be perfect.
Actually, I want to add that, actually, I did have an opportunity to take a tour of the area, and it's fabulous. I mean, the faculty is fantastic, and the facilities and the equipment is fantastic. And I want to try to carve some time out of my time so I can take a course in photo. I love photography, I just don't have the time, but they have all the toys, so.
Any questions? Trustee Hatcher?
I'd just like to thank the faculty and advisory for being creative about what their students need. It's a constant adjustment, and this looks very good.
100% agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, on to Tab H, action item, Establishment of Annual Spring Retreat. It's a recommendation that the Board of Trustees revise their 2023 schedule of monthly board meetings and establish and hold its annual spring retreat Thursday, March 30, 2023, at 4:00 PM at the Morris Lawrence Building in the Towesley Auditorium, located at 4,800 East Huron River Drive, Ann Arbor. Do I hear a motion?
Move.
Support.
It moved and supported. Any discussion?
Got a question.
Trustee DeBardi?
Right now, I have our regular board meeting for Tuesday at 6:00 PM on the 28th. So this would be in addition to that regular board meeting.
Yes, and to be honest...
We would have the regular board meeting Tuesday, the 28th.
Tuesday, and this would be on a Thursday.
And then on the following Thursday, we would have the retreat.
That is correct. We'll have it separated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Vanessa, can you call the roll?
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBardi?
DeBardi, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to adjourn the monthly meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Great, the monthly meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.